Okay, the Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. Calling the roll, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
And Mr. Fiore is present. First item on the agenda is Use of Facilities Memo. Mrs. Moynihan, any comments?
These are just the normal people that are organizations that are using our facilities to do some recitals, and again, if they are hiring custodians, please fire, and the dates of the organizational items that they're using.
Receive them, place them, file.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed so voted. Next item is the bid opening for the Main Entrance Vestabule Project.
As you recall, the original bid opening was at the beginning of October. We extended that to be due today. We've received two bids that arrived. The first one is Lisette Glass in Holyoke, Massachusetts.
So Lisette Glass has provided a total bid award for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight Vestabule projects totaling $376,000, 351. And upon a quick initial glance, it appears they have provided the appropriate documentation or backup, but obviously, I would, once we're done opening the bids, I would entertain or recommend their motion to refer this to the administration to perform their due diligence. But the total again, $376,000, 351.
The second bid comes from Lynn, Massachusetts, company called G V W Incorporated.
So G V W, again bidding on the eight facilities, the eight sites.
Their bid total is $1,938,000.
One million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
That's $1.6 million difference.
Well, that's why we perform our due diligence, right?
Easy to see what the specs are, and that may make a difference.
And again, upon initial review, it appears that all the required documentation and backup has been provided.
Any other wishes to the committee?
Motion to refer to administration and award, or bring it back to us. Bring it back to the committee for, with the recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, think of by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Next item is award of the bid on the Taunton High School food truck. Mrs. Moynihan.
There were two bids that were opened in a previous school committee meeting for the food truck for Taunton High School, and I am recommending awarding the food truck bid to Food Truck Builders Group, also known as FTBG, as they were overall the lowest and most responsive bidder. The vendor will include a split level window to be ADA accessible. Two vendors that did go ahead and bid was Bear Ventures Chef Units LLC for $219,909.61, and the one that I just recommended, Food Truck Builders Group. Their bid came into $168,700. And again, three bids were submitted, but one of them came in late, so we did not accept that one.
Motion to approve the, what'd you say, FTBG?
FTBG.
Yes, FTBG, Food Truck Builders Group.
$168,700.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, think of by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Then we have two bills payable warrants. First, one for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $29,011.76.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, think of by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. And for fiscal '24 in the amount of $608,286.80.
Motion to approve the amount stated.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, so voted.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's regala The bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan will leave the invocation.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for Armand DeRosa, who, those of us that knew him, he was always Joe. Joe DeRosa passed away on Saturday, October 21st, 2023. He was 83 years old. He was, he spent his career as a teacher in Foxborough, Mathewan, and also in the Taunton Public Schools, and for a short while, he was the principal over at Bennett, at Bennett, I'm sorry, Bennett Elementary School. He also volunteered for many activities, including Taunton East Little League and the Taunton Boys Club, and he was a guy that really enjoyed his gun and making sure it was very pristine. He also liked watching Boston sports. He leaves behind his, he was pre-deceased, excuse me, by his wife Nancy and his son Christopher DeRosa and his sister Janine. He also leaves behind his sister Teresa DeRosa and three children, Doreen Vogel, Cheryl Sylvia, and Michelle Toley. Cheryl Sylvia has been a longtime teacher with us in the Taunton Public Schools and is currently a sixth grade teacher at Martin Middle, and he was also a proud grandfather and great-grandfather. So I would like to ask you to please keep his family in our thoughts and in our prayers in a moment of silence for Joe DeRosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pulowski.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Ms. Delora.
Present.
Chairman Gregory DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. We have Isaiah Wendell here this evening for the Student Advisory Committee report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am here on behalf of the Taunton High School Advisory Committee. There's a lot of things going on at Taunton High School, per usual. Today, BSU came into our school and conducted immediate acceptance interviews. Some of our students were accepted into BSU today. Shout out to the College and Career Center, ran by Ms. Goldar, for helping all of those students. Upcoming is our playoffs for our football season, which will be played at BC High School. We will be offering a bus for transportation to students who cannot drive there, so they can see the game. Our Student Council Spirit Week will be starting the week of the 13th. Starting tomorrow, students will be able to vote on theme days they would like to see for that week, and that week will end with homecoming on November 17th, which will be held in the Taunton High Fieldhouse. Tickets are now available online for the first time this year. Students can buy tickets online, which is a great thing for accessibility and all that. Taunton High School has recently began using an app called Parent Square, where administration and teachers can send reminders easily to students and parents and guardians for individual school events or individual messaging to the student through, from the teacher. Also, this upcoming Friday will be closing grades for Term One, so that marks a big point in the school year that we're already through the first term. And that is, that is all I have from Taunton High School. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. Closing grades already, that went by quickly. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. Isaiah, any idea on how many admitted to Bridgewater State University today? Did they share any numbers with you?
I do not have any numbers. All I heard is one student specifically, Drew Alves, he's a part of the Student Advisory Committee, also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public input?
Do we have a motion to accept that report? Is that appropriate?
Second, I'll have.
Sure. Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, so voted. Okay. So, I'm sorry, was there any public input tonight?
There is none.
None.
No public input.
Okay. Then we will go to D, which is the Accountability Review. Mr. Superintendent Cabral, would you like to introduce that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this evening, we have Mr. Barata and our team of district-wide administrators supporting Chris in the presentation this evening, Dr. Elizabeth Pulowski, Danielle Kurt, Delilah Mendoza, Hillary Breznerhan, and Amy Moynihan. So I'll let Chris, when he kicks off the presentation, if he'd like to mention or reference to say anything else about his team, he's more than welcome to. What I would just like to say is, years ago, when this presentation was made, we had one or two curriculum leaders leading this presentation. And what this committee has demonstrated is that we can do both. We can reduce class sizes, we can support social-emotional needs of our kids by adding staff, and also providing this district with a robust team of educational leaders. As you'll see, we are in a pattern of growth. I know most people at home want to see a parabolic improvement, however, we know the old tale about the tortoise, the tortoise and the hare, and in the end, the tortoise won because the tortoise was steady. And I think what you'll see in this presentation is that we are on a path for steady, sustained growth. So with that being said, I'll turn things over to Mr. Barata and his team, and I'm very proud of the work that we have accomplished, thanks to, large part, to the work of this group, and also because of the support of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral and school committee members. I want to reiterate what Superintendent Cabral mentioned earlier. As a team, we work together to be successful, just as much as the school committee works together to move forward our initiatives and stay the course. And as Superintendent Cabral said, it's not a straight line to change. And we can't step back from the hard work of adopting the curriculum that we've implemented, because over time, we'll see our students become more and more successful, and we'll see the fruits of our labor. But I also want to draw attention to our team and know how the personal aspect of their work in our district. Dr. Elizabeth Pulowski, parent of children in the district, educator, now district leader. Delilah Mendoza, student of the district, parent of students in the district, classroom instructor, district leader. Danielle Kurt, parent of students in the district, building leader and teacher, district leader. Hillary Breznerhan, former educator within our district, took a brief hiatus working with the state, now returning to us as a district leader of coordinating and testing. Amy Moynihan, parent of student, teacher, now district leader. So the work that this team has done makes me look good, quite honestly, because they're hardworking, dedicated to our craft, and we're all mission-driven about providing the most relevant, timely, and rigorous instruction for all of our students. So I'd like to begin our presentation, and like to forewarn you, this is a much more in-depth report than we've had done previously, because of our team members here, we can actually answer some questions a little bit more in depth. So I'm going to let you know, please write your questions down, because on page or slide eight, we will pause for questions, page 11, page 14, and 17. So eight, 11, 14, and 17. It doesn't prohibit you from asking questions at any other time, but it may make this presentation become a little bit more cohesive in nature if we hold off until that point. First component is, what exactly does the state of Massachusetts, DESI, look at in terms of indicators of whether or not they deem your school or district being successful, on the track to being successful, and where do we test and how are we grouped? First glance, you'll notice the column on the right has more indicators than the one on the left, meaning the one on the left are those indicators for non-high school grades three through eight, which makes sense at the high school level, you have more indicators. Not all of it pertains to MCAS. I'll draw attention to chronic absenteeism. That's not an MCAS-related item, although it monitors student chronic absenteeism. Or advanced coursework completion rate at the high school, a different indicator than it is from MCAS. Dropout prevention, again, all factors in. So we have scaled scores, performance in ELA, mathematics, and science. You also have the student growth, which is more of an indicator, is a real-life indicator of how well myself, as a child, performed on a test with the same cohort of students, really drilling down and saying, okay, is the student growing? Prior to this presentation, we talked during Ms. Mendoza's presentation about multilingual learners. Our goal is always to hit high achievement targets. The next best thing is student growth, because we do know that there is an existing gap of student performance between our district, our students versus the district, and at some occasions, us versus other urban. So we have all these indicators which factor into our ratings. So we go here, there's categories, three categories, there's school comparisons. Schools are grouped together by grade spans on a statewide assessments that they administer, non-high schools serving a combination of grades three through eight, middle high schools, and K-12 high schools serving one or more grades three through eight and grade 10, and high schools where they only test in grade 10. We're in that unique area where we have an eighth-through-twelve, eighth-through-twelve high school, which puts us in a different category, but knowing that 10th grade is the MCAS year in which our students are measured and gauged. The normative component of accountability percentile measures the performance of all our students in a school compared to other schools in this state. And I will have Hillary Breznerhan come up here next. And that really looks at that column highlighted by that orange arrow of where do you come up with this percentage, is that our students versus themselves, Taunton High School versus Middlebury High School, or whatever, and I'll have Ms. Breznerhan take over from here to provide a little more insight into what does it mean about accountability-related percentiles.
So as mentioned, the accountability calculation in Massachusetts is designed to answer two main questions. One, how are our schools doing compared to all the other schools in Massachusetts? And two, are our schools demonstrating improvement year to year? So looking at that first question around how are we doing compared to other schools, that's where the accountability percentile comes in. Schools are ranked from one to 99 within, compared to other schools within their grade span, the elementary and middle schools, the middle high schools, and the high schools. This data is used to identify the lowest performing schools in the state for additional targeted assistance and funding from DESI, and it's also used to identify the lowest performing student groups within schools in the state. In this example, you can see the school is identified in the 17th percentile, meaning that it's performing as well as or better than 17% of schools in Massachusetts with similar grade spans. The other accountability component is the improvement target, which is answering, how is our school doing compared to its previous data? Is it improving year to year against its own school-specific improvement targets? These targets are set for all the achievement indicators that we showed you previously, such as the MCAS achievement and growth, high school graduation rates, and those other indicators, and it provides information on how much improvement a school made year to year. Targets are set for the schools as a whole, and for districts, and for a school's lowest performing student group. Schools get information in the form of points awarded based on their performance. These are from zero to four, so schools that had a decline from one year to the next in terms of MCAS achievement, or access, or one of the other indicators get a zero, all the way up to four if they've demonstrated that they've exceeded their improvement targets. Looking at an example of this, this is a school that performed in the 17th percentile, so as I mentioned, they performed as well as or better than 17% of similar schools. DESI takes all of the available indicators for a school, awards points based on whether they declined, showed improvement, met or exceeded targets, and then averaged those points for all students and the lowest performing student group. For this school, they showed 40% progress toward their improvement targets, meaning that they met moderate, they've shown moderate progress over time from one year to the next.
Thank you, and that's a lot of numbers coming your way and mathematics of calculations of how we perform. This is why, as school leaders, when Principal Cabral meets with all, or Superintendent Cabral meets with all the principals, we talk about, you shouldn't be comparing one school versus another. It's, quite honestly, us against the state. How are we performing against the state? And those improvement targets are built upon, how is your school itself doing? And how are the students within there have their own set improvement targets, and are we meeting those targets? Some assessment participation, which we'll draw on the next slide of what is really identifies one of our schools in the district. Districts and schools are required to maintain a 95% participation rate for the district school as a whole for each subgroup or student category, which means attendance matters, right? Regardless of whether you agree or disagree with MCAS as an assessment, our students cannot learn if they're not in the building in front of our highly qualified educators. It just so happens that our enrollment, or attendance dipped at one of the schools for one of the area subgroups that we'll see on the next slide, which identified them as an area of improvement. So calculation includes not only ELA math and science MCAS, again, science is only in grades five, eight, and 10. Access for ELLs, or multilingual learners, included the English language arts rate, which Ms. Mendoza may speak to, and then calculated two ways with a higher rate using determination. The actual one-year rate versus the current year, and then the combined two-year rate if actual one-year rate is below 95%. So when you hear the big picture, and was probably what the public wants to hear, and I know we, Superintendent Cabral, myself, our team, and actually our building leaders, all sort of focus on hypersensitive to the fact, is the categorization of schools by the state. If you notice, along the middle span of the graph, you go from schools of recognition to your far left, to your far right, those schools and districts requiring broad, comprehensive support. You'll notice, East Taunton Elementary School, Bennett Elementary, Pol, Galligan are the substantial progress towards those targets which have been identified by the state, you know, that internal challenge. Moderate progress towards those targets, Chamberlain, Friedman, Martin, and Parker. Schools that still require or may now need focused or targeted support, Mulcahy and Taunton High School. You'll notice in here that Letty Preschool and Taunton Alternative High School is not identified on this chart. This goes to what we discussed in the subcommittee meeting, which will come out later on when Taunton Alternative High School brought their information forward. The number of students who sit for the MCAS is smaller than the cohort size that the state will measure. In essence, they have below, I believe, 40 students in that group, so they don't register as following the MCAS accountability rating. They in turn use internal mechanisms tracking individual students of how well they're doing. And now I'll have Ms. Kurt come up, Humanities Director, along with Ms. Hillary Breznerhan, to discuss the ELA MCAS performance targets.
On this slide and the subsequent slide, we're going to get deeper into the MCAS performance for all grades and for all student groups. On the left-hand side, we have the percent of students that were not meeting expectations on the MCAS, partially meeting expectations, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations, and then a combination of students meeting or exceeding expectations on the ELA MCAS. On the right-hand side, we have the comparative data. The comparison between the district percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations to that of the state, then to students also enrolled in urban schools, and then on the far right, the comparison between the 2023 students and the 2022 cohort. So for example, for grade three, if we're looking at that, 32% of students met or exceeded expectations on the 2023 ELA MCAS. That was 12 points lower than the state, four points higher than their urban school peers, and two points higher than the 2022 cohort of third graders.
I'm sorry, we haven't worked out this routine as well. I did say that we're going to pause after slide eight for any questions. So I guess we'll stop at this moment and say, are there any questions thus far talking about the indicators, the categorization of schools, or the metrics involved in rating of schools in terms of accountability ratings?
So on the previous slide, we had Mulcahy and Taunton High School in the focused targeted supports.
Yes.
Do we have any ideas why, I guess, Mulcahy would be there versus the other elementary schools?
That's an outstanding question, Mr. Pulowski. Taunton High School was identified because of, we talked about, 95% participation rate. Our Hispanic subgroup was below that level, and as a result, was identified and needs of support. Now, the support that that requires is probably, is less than perhaps Mulcahy, and I'll discuss Mulcahy in a moment. That's making sure that our student population targeting, where is that, who are those students looking back, why did they miss? What was the rationale behind that? And then making sure that we pay attention to all student groups, monitoring attention, and that goes part and parcel to what Superintendent Cabral is doing, not only in his individual meetings with principals, but also as the principal team itself with Open Architect, sending out weekly notices, here's your chronic absenteeism. What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? Again, if they're not in here, they can't learn. Mulcahy, when Ms. Breznerhan talked about the percentile ranked versus the other schools across the state, and I think the reference might have been 14% or 7%, Mulcahy ranked amongst other schools below that 10%, and as such, they're identified again for continued support. What's interesting about Mulcahy is that they have an extremely high-functioning instructional leadership team, which is distributive leadership, with subcommittees of looking at attendance data, behavioral data, mental health supports, writing and such. So the structures are in place to improve student learning. So, and that's something more of another layer of, okay, what other supports can we provide? We also increased, through this committee, went from one instructional coach to two, against a population of over 800 students, and when you can break out the instructional coaching into different areas, it's providing support, along with the mental health supports of the school adjustment counselors, the resets rooms, and everything else.
Is what you just explained, the assistance or support that these schools are receiving?
Absolutely. So looking, the year prior, we had, well, three schools identified, two have emerged, so we have one remaining. The monies that we actually were awarded yesterday, the $100,000 grant to help support the schools, one goes to the continuation of the support that we've done at the other schools, and also- and also reinvesting even more monetary, financial resources and personnel to supporting Mulcahy. So instead of, last year's plan might have been specific to each individual school. We've actually leveraged our monies to say, we're going to support instructional leadership teams across all buildings, so we don't have to see a backslide of any of the other buildings, but also additional supports for both the high school, who's going to access the bar grant for that, and also Mulcahy that will access the tag grant.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight to discuss some of our progress that we've made throughout the district in English and language arts. As you can see, almost every grade level has shown significant improvement compared to our urban schools network especially, with a special highlight in sixth and seventh grade. Both of those grades have showed significant improvement based on our instructions, our differentiation, we were able to make significant progress. You'll notice that in fifth grade and in eighth grade, we have a little more work to do. Fifth grade and eighth grade, interestingly enough, are both grades that are transition years into new buildings. So you have six elementary schools feeding into three middle schools, three middle schools feeding into the high school. I think there's definitely something to investigate there in terms of aligning our practices with previous grades in order to see that continued growth at all of those grade levels. But to see that growth in seventh grade, if you look at us compared to the urban school network, we're 13 percentage points above the urban schools. That's incredible. If you've ever worked with a seventh grader and tried to convince them to write, it's incredible that we're 13 points ahead of other urban school networks. And we're only four below the state. That's pretty incredible when you especially consider that we're an urban school. Obviously, we want to beat the state, so you can imagine my targets within my own mind in terms of continuous improvement at all grade levels. Again, there's significant improvement of all our student groups. All of them are either beating our urban school networks or at least equal to them. So again, it's that differentiated support that we see in our classrooms, the support for our ML students, the continuous modeling and showing exemplars to our students is continuing to allow that growth to occur. Same data, but this is for 10th grade. 10th grade, you can see that our students really acclimated with the high school and are doing very well in English, especially in comparison to that eighth grade class that is down a few points. So by the time they get to 10th grade, they've solidified their skills and are able to show great improvement as well.
So Ms. Kurt didn't mention was the fact that this work addressing the misalignment of writing prompts and calibration of writing actually took place or started this summer at the behest of the grant that she wrote and then also wrote another grant, which is a continuation of 250-some-odd thousand dollars for professional development this year. Looking at writing prompts, comment assessments, and rubrics, looking at student writing on an ongoing basis. So rather than having this as like an autopsy of how we did last year, we are actually monitoring student writing throughout the year with the support of our teachers as to what writing should look like vertically in terms of horizontally, meaning third-grade teachers know what fourth-grade expectations are. Second grade, first and second grade, know the writing responsibilities of those third graders who take an MCAS. So it's the leadership that Ms. Curtis showed with the support of the coaches in the buildings, the support of our educators and building principals, who've really launched this work. So where you saw those areas that were non-green, we anticipate next year that we're going to be seeing more green and those numbers increasing as going along. Now, I'd like to have Ms. Brejnerhan remain and also have Dr. Palowski come up about the mathematics.
Hello, everyone. I'm really excited to be here today to talk to you about the MCAS performance. So this is our third year implementing the illustrious curriculum, a high-quality instructional material. And all the research shows that student achievement comes after three years, sometimes four years, of adult learning. And we have been committed to ensuring that our teachers are supported and have all they need to give our students the best math, science, and ELA education. So what I would like to highlight on this slide is that we have some growth in the earliest grades for our students in mathematics. These students have been learning in the eye, according to the IIM curriculum, for the majority of their time in taught public schools. So we are better able to address, predict, and address their needs. Last year specifically, we were noticing strange trends in the gaps that we've seen in what they know and what we expected them to know. And we went all in with the Looney Math Consulting Group that works with us and went specifically into targeting grades three through five. And you can see that that did impact the growth of students. And this is the same data for the younger grades. And again, we have some areas of growth, but this just tells us we have more work to do. And in grade 10, actually, this looks wonderful. And I think this has to do with the commitment to welcoming students and the way that this curriculum does, within the curriculum, create a learning space that all students see themselves as mathematicians. And here we are with science. This is difficult. So we have been implementing Open SciEd for a few years in grade eight and in grades nine and 10, one year. And the testing band that we, but I'm sorry, let me say this. We're implementing this curriculum supported by the state that is high quality, but the assessment for this curriculum that the state has created doesn't match the curriculum yet. So we're ready for when the big changes happen for the MCAS. It's going to be changed through the innovative assessment. And we, so when that change happens, I believe it begins at this spring, we will see an enormous growth with our students. And also too, it is difficult because students in grade five are tested on their third, fourth, and fifth grade science content. So they learned two-thirds of what they're assessed in another school. And the same with the grade eight students. They're learning every, they're learning two-thirds of the assessment of the content in another school. And this is that same data broken up into groups. You can see that we are in certain groups doing better than our urban colleagues. But what's, what is great, I don't like to be competitive. The urban groups that I do work with, I work really closely with the other science and math directors in the urban network. And we do really support each other and share best practices so that we can all do better for our students. And at the high school level, you can see we've made a lot of progress with, in this last year for many reasons. One, the curriculum is more welcoming in science as well. And we're able to have all students see themselves as scientists. Additionally, there's been additional time that teachers are working together in their PLCs. And the change in schedule definitely impacted science instruction as well. Are there any questions?
Some really high-level takeaways from this committee is this. We were committed to bringing in high-quality curriculum materials, yes, during the middle of COVID, maybe a little bit before. For example, in our ELA Curriculum Wonders, we purchased it just in time. Then the pandemic hit and our educators were actually to be able to dive deep into it and look at the resources, which they're getting now through professional development that Danielle Kurt has arranged for them. While others sort of turtled a little bit and didn't lean into high-level bringing this curriculum, we didn't. The state is now transforming their assessments to match the curriculum which we have adopted. And in fact, I think Dr. Palowski either was or will be on that performance task committee to develop the tests, which aligns perfectly with our IIM or Open SciEd, that inquiry model that you're actually going to see in history coming down the pike. So although, and yes, we are not happy, we're not comforted by the data that we see because we know we can do better, but we're actually moving in the right way, going back to what Superintendent Cabral mentioned earlier about that parabolic mission of looking of what it should normally be like. Change is difficult, adaptive change is even more difficult, and we're in the throes of that now, but we will come out stronger than we were a year ago, two years ago, and definitely five years ago. So what are some of our celebrations? All of our schools exceeded expectations, reducing chronic absenteeism. Again, those state targets set there, the bar has been lowered back to pre-COVID times, which is why Superintendent Cabral has already gotten on the bandwagon of making sure that everyone was aware of the not only number of students who are out, but the actual individual students and what are we doing about it, taking advantage of this committee's work about providing school improvement funds for Saturday makeup time programs that the superintendent, that the commissioner already came out and talked about, that Superintendent Cabral was already ahead of the curve. What are we doing to address the needs of those students? Getting them back in to decrease the attendance or chronic absentee rate, but also increase the time on learning. Our lowest performing student group significantly increased 4.2 percentage points, their math MCAS scaled score. We increased our graduation rate compared to 2022 by 2.3 percentage points. Our Bennett Elementary increased its school percentile rating by 14 points. Galligan Elementary and Martin increased their percentages by seven points. Again, Martin was at that 10% threshold, which identified for them support last year because they increased now to 17. They no longer are identified as a state and need support, but we are allocating those funding and support to make sure they don't backslide. And then two schools moved out of targeted assistance accountability designation, those being obviously Parker and Martin. So where are we now? We've implemented high-quality curriculum materials in all our core content areas. That's the first step. The more difficult challenge is adapting teaching practices to address not only the requirements of the curriculum, but also our student needs. That will take time. Unfortunately, we're in a district where educators are leaning in and taking advantage of all the professional development offerings that we're providing in order to change their pedagogy. Targeted professional development on the part of this team here is embedded and some standalone PD. For example, we have Lisa Decker coming in and providing not only large-scale professional development opportunities, say in the cafeteria auditorium, but also providing targeted support via office hours, meeting with individual teachers, meeting with teams as part of an ongoing support. She was in Florida, now she's Kansas, but she has quite an affinity with taught public schools, with our inclusion model, and wants to see this work follow through. Susan Looney and her consultant teams provide embedded support in the buildings ongoing. So it's not like I take a Saturday class one time and then I'm expected to go back into the building, remember what was provided, going back and have no one to bounce information off of. These consultants are in the buildings, meeting grade-level meetings, discussing what they saw, doing collegial walks, which I didn't mention here, of where educators along with administrators walk through classrooms with all the teachers, identifying what is working well, and then sharing that out, building capacity within the district so that we have that ongoing embedded support by our own educators. Our assessment and data systems, the iReady software program has a diagnostic for our students, an exam, in which then their math and reading programs are set. One, our teachers know exactly where they stand, where the students are performance-wise, and can adjust their instruction. But also, there's called a MyPath component where the students can work offline or maybe in a small group, that's personalized instruction based upon their actual diagnostic skills. So it's not a guesswork as to, gee, I'm not sure where Chris is. The program is intuitive enough to be able to program work for me. And then teachers can monitor that. Those assessments are given fall, January, and then in June. Open Architect, I alluded to earlier, it's that database that Superintendent Cabral bred in with a whole bunch of data streams so that at your fingertips, you're able to know student attendance, MCAS results, iReady results, DIBRA results, chronic absenteeism, access scores, and other data, so that you're not fumbling around five, six different systems where it's right there at your fingertips. And the big priority is, now that you have it, what are you doing with the data? And that's where it comes into our slide about their district and school instructional leadership teams, looking all the data that's called. District level, Superintendent Cabral, myself, this team, our state partners in here, looking at all the data basically every two, two and a half weeks. What are you doing? What have you done since we last met? What are you going to be doing? So they're monitoring all our work as a district level, modeling for us those practices. At the building level, the same thing happens. So what will we do at the district level is expected to be done at the building level, where they're meeting with instructional coaches, educators, nursing staff perhaps, with our guidance counselors with social emotional support, looking at their data streams, setting progress monitoring goals in which to monitor throughout the year on a consistent basis. And I know school committee members here, they're on both the elementary and secondary subcommittees with their school improvement plans, have noticed that chart at the end. It was, when are you meeting and what are you looking at tracking with metrics? Our newcomers program, spearheaded by Ms. Mendoza, is actually a model for the state, has been recognized not only during tier-focused monitoring, but she's actually been invited now to share out that information at the state level of looking at building a spine of services, our newcomers academy, for those students recently in the country or, again, native-born who don't speak English, providing those supports and then following and tracking those students out in the general education classes, again, for multiple years and making sure that they're becoming more and more proficient in the English language. And obviously, and most importantly, accessing those high-quality curriculum materials that this district has purchased with your support. And obviously, our mental health supports, both personnel and spaces, you've heard about because you've advocated for it, the additional staff, social workers, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors and such, and then the spaces, the reset rooms and all the like. Those also may not seem like a lot, but they actually provide the gateway to learning because if you're dysregulated, you can't learn. Obviously, the lunch programs and such, if you're hungry, you can't learn. Safety in schools is a priority because if you don't feel safe, you know, mazloz, you will not learn. And that's why a lot of the, I guess you'd say, non-academic supports is really feeds into what we can do academically. Again, through this committee, this team, the teams out in the buildings, all working together to provide the optimal opportunities for our students to learn. So that, I believe, concludes our presentation. If there's any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Barada-Antin. I saw Mr. Palowski raise his hand.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, it didn't click. So what's next?
Oh, okay.
District prioritization. Again, we just said, the district submitted our proposal, which writing across the entire district, every grade level is focusing on writing along with the social emotional supports, the continuation of instructional practices in tier-one social emotional supports. Again, just because we start something doesn't mean it just goes away. It's part of what good school, great school districts do, is they continue to work. So it's not in a, it's not an initiative. It's our core of our work. District prioritization, and I can't see that blue, but it's also strengthening our tier-one social emotional supports. We want to extend and support our partnerships with Confianza, which actually works with our multilingual director, Delilah Mendoza, our educators. And then we'll eventually provide supports for our kindergarten instructors, who are now welcomed our multilingual learners into their rooms. Lisa Decker, as I mentioned, about the special education students and our educators, supporting them. Ayana Cooper, who Superintendent Cabral brought to us at our admin retreat, again, focusing on the multilingual learners. Not only what you can support, the good stuff, but also what you can do to avoid compliance issues. And fortunately, one, she had a student, a relative, who went to Taunton High School. So she actually was elated that she could actually show up at our admin retreat and saying, you know what, my nephew's coming and always talked really great about you, so it's really nice to see you people here in face-to-face. But she also talks about what to avoid. And fortunately, we're on a path of saying, you, Ms. Mendoza and your department are running a very good ship, so you want to keep it and strengthen it. Our inclusionary practices, multilingual goals for all administrators, that was Fiat from Superintendent Cabral. All administrators have to have three goals related to addressing the needs of multilingual learners. Communication across the board, providing timely, relevant, and actionable feedback post-walkthroughs. We spent, and as I mentioned before, we have done more walkthroughs in classrooms in the last two years than probably has ever gone on in taught public schools, ever. But we also want to pull back the curtain and not say, well, gee, Barada walked through my room, Dr. Palowski walked through my room, what did they have to say? So we are focusing on providing feedback out to everybody, not identifying individual classrooms or practices, but trends. What we noticed was going well, areas of improvement. Because unless they know what we need to improve, we won't be able to make that. And we're all, all hands on deck and we're working side-by-side with educators. Year-one implementation of investigating history, grades five through seven, that goes to the work of Danielle Kurt. Again, inquiry-based, we're one of the few that went all in this year with it. So kudos to us. And again, we just received additional monies for professional development the rest of this year. And then our grade eight with civics, this would be the first year fully implemented in grade eight. Last year with the schedule change, there was a little transition. Half the year, they were doing their other courses studies. And January on, eighth grade began their civics project. They're actually looking forward to their project this year where Mr. Gillen, Curriculum Supervisor Gillen, is working on a menu items of possible activities which students can gravitate towards. And those mechanics are still being worked out, but it's something that I'm sure the mayor's office potentially may get phone calls about. that I'm sure the mayor's office potentially may get phone calls about, we want to do civics projects, and this is what we'd like to do. Continuation collaboration with the new teacher project, we can't do this work alone, that's what TNTP stands for. They're not only looking at their literacy and humanities area, but also our math and sciences. Really great support because they're actually collaborating with DESI. Again, we're working independently with TNTP and DESI, and next you know, they're working together. Again, it just goes to show you that our district has been proactive, and not only our relationships with outside entities to provide a support, but also with curriculum and the state. Continued collaboration with Education First in support of Wonders K-5 and Foundations. That I remarked earlier about how we adopted Wonders just prior to COVID, and our educators were teaching online and didn't have access to materials and really don't understand that. Through the work of Ms. Kurt getting this grant, educators now are diving into the Wonders materials, looking at the resources we have. And Foundations, we're piloting in Galligan and here at E-Pole. It's a K-2 program developed by Wilson, which is structured, highly structured, phonemic-based programming to support our students, that not only provide tier-one instruction, but also tier-two and tier-three supports. Early indications are that the educators really, really find it beneficial. And again, we have $250,000 to provide professional development for the rest of the year, so if we roll it out, if that momentum continues with those who are piloting liking it, we should be able to provide professional development starting in January for all other kindergarten through two teachers, so that, and then purchasing the materials so that they'll be ready to hit the ground hypothetically in September, as soon as the students return to us. And then our final year with Taunton Public Schools and Nexus, thankfully, this committee has approved, myself, Dr. Palowski, Jordan Valloy, Curriculum Supervisor of the high school, and Tanya Bransky, educator, was formerly Taunton High School, now at Freedom Middle School, of attending this nationally identified or recognized conference regarding the instruction of science. Our focus coming out of last year, actually, was about writing, and lo and behold, what are we doing across all curriculum areas? Writing. So it's the seamless integration of all our efforts that's going to move our district forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barada. Are there any questions from the members? Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Barada, thank you and thank your team for all, for the great presentation and all the great work. It's clear that you all really know your stuff and you're really analyzing all this data. I'm particularly impressed with the fact that you all really see this for the long term. You guys understand that you're building a foundation and working towards stuff, and I think it's clear from the presentation, you all are ahead of the curve and kind of seeing what's coming. You know, you've implemented curriculum that doesn't necessarily align with the assessments now, but it's going to assess what's going to be there in the future, and that's impressive. You're preparing our kids for what they need to do, so thanks for everything.
Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very encouraged to see, being a social studies person myself, implementing the investigating history and the civics project. I was involved with the curriculum revision for that back before the pandemic, and I've been looking forward to seeing civics coming back because it's been such an important part of my own life and development, and I'm happy to see that kids are being exposed to that again, and I'm glad it's finally coming to pass.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. George?
Thank you all for that amazing presentation, a lot of information, and, you know...
Thank you. So I'm just thinking, as a former student who was in my second year having to pass the MCAS and all the anxiety and pressure that came with that, and then seeing, you know, the students that are getting noticed as the underperforming students and the supports that get raised, and I see all the support that you're providing to the teachers at the school level, and I guess I'm kind of wondering, like, what are some of the action steps or interventions and supports that are provided to those specific students in, like, the middle and high school area in order to support them with that crucial test coming up with graduation kind of looming over their head?
That's great. So we spend a lot of time looking at, one, instruction, the scaffolds necessary to support our students' access to material, right? We're actually looking at the use of assessments and feedback we provide to students in order to help support their continued learning. Superintendent Cabral has also talked about after-school extra-help sessions, transportation is not an issue, so that is one aspect. We talked about iReady, so you have that individual pathway of instruction that students can work not only within the classroom, say in small groups, but also at home. The high school is investigating, or will probably be bringing on board probably within the next week, it's through a grant through DESI, which is free, is Achieve 3000, which is similar to iReady but at that level, and since it's being used in, I believe, Pittsburgh and Brockton, so kudos to Assistant Principal Bleno for investigating that and Principal Holcomb of bringing in supports. They're also looking at, as I mentioned earlier, alluded to, the Barr Foundation, focusing on all student performance, but actually digging deeper into how can we really engage the reluctant learners and what does that look like? So you have credit recovery program after school, you have extra-help sessions after school, you have this program. So they're actually building out supports with the realization of, wouldn't it be great, I'm just putting this on pause, wouldn't it be great if we could change our high school schedule to include a win block, almost like a study, not a study skills block, but a support block for instruction? We're already living with what we have, so it's how can we build supports around that? So over time, we should see our students performing better. We'll always require supports, but how best can we provide to students and meet where they're at? Because we have a lot of students dropped off before school who've taken part of some of these programs, we have after-school, you'll soon see vacation schools pop up and Saturday schools. So the opportunities for students to improve their learning will be out there, will be posted, and will be publicized, so we'll just ask that perhaps if a student comes home and says, gee, no one's staying after school, there's no extra help, there's no other, parent, guardian, caregiver should feel free to call their child's school and say, there probably are supports, what can my child take part in?
Thank you.
Mr. Laura?
Thank you. Most impressive presentation, Mr. Barada, you and your team, congratulations to the way you prioritize what our system needs, how you're working with the state partners and making sure that in compliance, in accordance with the regulations, and everybody's on board so that in the end, our students benefit, and as a team, there's great, great opportunities to excel, and also the fact of how you prioritize the writing, the main math, science, social studies now, these are essentials to ensure that students will succeed. So thus, I think what we're doing as a system is working to make sure that our students do well in their future learning. Thank you.
This team and entire department believes that the, that writing is the ultimate expression of higher-order thinking, so you need to know the facts, you need to synthesize, you need to do it in concise manner, so having writing as the number-one priority encompasses all the work based upon the individual departments, so thank you for that comment.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Barada, thank you to your team for all your hard work and dedication to Taunton Public Schools. My question is in regards to professional development, I know you spoke a lot about it at the end. Is that something, is it conducted by Taunton Public Schools, or do you bring in outside speakers, and which one has a higher attendance rate by the staff?
Okay, so we have different layers of professional development. Do we have keynote speakers? Yes, directly tied to our overarching strategic goals. For example, on the seventh, we're having Katie Novak, who's a resident expert in universal design for learning. How do you provide opportunities for every student to access the curriculum? So we have those large mass speakers who actually may work out in breakout groups. Then we actually have individual professional development where we could access outside consultants to come in. We have, for example, next Wednesday, we have our own educators providing professional development. Our academic testing team is going to be meet with special educators to talk about how to interpret the Wyatt results, which is an assessment for, one, for the increase in knowledge base of the educator, but also how can the educator then present this information in a consumable manner to the parents, guardians, caregivers during an IP meeting? So it's a mix and match of not only our internal professionals, but also when necessary, going outside to bring individuals in, because oftentimes, we need outside people to come in to affirm what we've been saying inside the district. Sometimes it's better to hear coming from another voice that resonates with more people.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me begin my comments by saying that at Bridgewater State University, you have approximately 10,500 students. This information is readily available to us, they drill down subcategories, improvements year over year. TPS has, what, 8,200 students now, Superintendent? The big difference is that the university has an institutional research division, and I commend this team for this excellent presentation of giving us at our fingertips everything that we need to know, because we build upon this and we continue to grow, and it's a testament to all of you, and welcome, Ms. Bresnahan, I believe that's how you pronounce it, I don't think we had the pleasure of meeting, welcome back to TPS to be part of this amazing team. As a school committee member, I have three pillars that I kind of judge my worth and my value, student success, teaching and learning environment, and equity, and all three of those are achieved by what has been presented to us tonight. And what does this all lead to? Community impact, to make our students better contributing citizens. And I've said it for the last two years on that wonderful, I think it was a Saturday one time, a Sunday another time, graduation, where we look upon the 500-plus or minus students in the audience, and we see those eyes and those faces just gleaming back at us. Some have expressions, some don't, but we know that when they leave that auditorium, they've been prepared to be outstanding contributing citizens, and thank you for that. And I conclude my remarks by sharing that music to my ears is increased graduation rates, and I think, you know, kids staying in school by coming to school, the absenteeism continued to decreasing, is also a testament to this, to engaging these students, and I wish that local media would put this on the front page instead of parking issues at Taunton High School or traffic parents at Taunton High School. So once again, thank you, everyone, for all your hard work, Mr. Barada, for your leadership, and the superintendent for his leadership, and of course, our school committee members for being part of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Superintendent Cabral?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I just want to just note three points. One, when you look at the data again, please go back and look at grades three and four on both the math and the English language outside. Three and four across the state is the area where we've identified there's the greatest need. Think about where our three- and four-year-olds were five years ago. Now, so therefore, they're the most impacted, so it's nice to see that we're seeing gains in those areas. The second thing I want to mention is, I typically don't like to brag, but I will say that as a superintendent, I'm very proud of my leadership team. When we began our team back in 2018, 2019, we had four schools in the bottom 10%. Right now, we have one in the bottom 10%. So I'm very proud of the fact that we've moved three schools out of the bottom 10%. And if you look around us, a lot of light communities, they have schools falling into the bottom 10%. So I'm very proud of the work that we've done in leveraging, implementing the curriculums, even though it wasn't the right time, there's never a right time, and I think we're going to pay, we're going to, those dividends will pay for us moving forward. And the last thing, I just ask that we provide the high schools some grace. Think about the high school last year implementing a new six-period schedule, so we are using last year's or this year's MCAS scores as their baseline moving forward, while the rest of our schools, 2023, is their baseline by which they'll be measured moving forward. So just, again, high school, a little bit of grace for our staff and for our students as we made that big transition to a full, to a six-period schedule versus a block schedule, because that was a transition that I believe, moving forward again, we'll see the dividends of that work. Then last but not least, to our seniors at Taunton High School, and the Taunton Alternative High School, and the Taunton Virtual Academy, I want to wish you the best of luck. I believe today marks early action period, so I want to wish all our seniors at home who are stressed out completing those applications and those essays, keep plugging away, keep plugging away. I promise you, the hard work and all the sleepless nights will pay huge dividends moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, thank you all for joining us tonight for that presentation. We will now move to the superintendent's report.
So as I've done during my last two superintendents' reports, I'm just going to provide you with four to six bullets, kind of highlighting the key points of my report. So first, you've heard a little bit about it this evening, the continuation grant for high-quality instructional materials, so the Taunton Public Schools was awarded a grant to the tune of $250,000 to continue implementing high-quality instructional materials, and that grant was awarded for fiscal '24. The funds will be allocated for educator stipends, staffing, professional development, as well as sustaining educator preparation programs and partnerships. There will be bi-weekly check-ins, and there will be three-site visits by the implementation team and consultant to ensure that we are spending the funds appropriately and as per design. And again, I need to commend our district leadership team for their work in securing the grant, and most, last but not least, the Taunton High School Career Vocational Technical Education Program, they did an outstanding job in also supporting this grant. Next, I want to mention that I'm very excited to report that we now have roughly a third of Taunton High School, 870 students have been coded as participating in career vocational education, so about a third of the building. And what that also does is it generates additional Chapter 74 dollars to help fund those programs, as well as other programs in the school department. And again, I want to give praise to this committee for trusting me and my team when we were moving forward to, and we proposed, the eighth Chapter 74 program, which was the construction, the skilled construction craft laborer, which I believe we have an additional 90 students that are coded. So we also received a $50,000 Innovation Pathway Support Grant and $99,000 in the Perkins Grant, that was also obtained. We also have investments in a new graphics printer and expansion of extracurricular activities like robotics, the robotics first team, and also junior achievement. We also are proud to announce that we had 350 students awarded OSHA 10 cards versus 37 students the previous year. And for those of you who like to support the high school and support our Chapter 74 programs, we are in the process of conducting mock interviews for our Chapter 74 seniors as part of the internship job fair. And last but not least, Taunton High School was also awarded a $50,000 early college planning grants. Next, as part of the early college programming, the grant will help to address equity gaps in college access to strengthen student preparedness. Additional guidance to award conditions regarding the award conditions will be provided by DESI, which we will ensure are implemented. And I want to thank and praise Principal Scott Holcomb and Assistant Principal Carolyn Bleno for their efforts and really having the vision and foresight to lead this work. And then my last item that I'm very proud to report, and I think I shared with you in my weekly newsletter, beginning on Monday, I'll be launching, the first time in my tenure as superintendent, a superintendent's residency initiative. So I'll be launching this initiative beginning Monday, November 6th, at the Mulcahy Elementary School, and per the request of Principal Dakota, I'm going to conclude my residency on November 30th. So my goals are to increase visibility and to strengthen relationships within the school. I want to improve engagement with my students, our families, our educators and staff, to understand what they face on a day-to-day basis, and also to get, to really get a deep understanding about the culture of the school. I also feel that this will provide a morale booster, as people see me on the ground floor, see me in classrooms, covering lunch duty, maybe doing a bus duty, maybe even cleaning a restroom, who knows? But I really want to show them that what we ask of them, knowing on my leadership team, we would never ask anyone to do something that members of my leadership team would not do ourselves. And then last but not least, thanks to the support of my leadership team and our central office staff, you know, I expect to continue fulfilling all my responsibilities, so any meetings that I would have held here at E-Pole, those meetings will be shifted to Mulcahy, so when I'm not in meetings or when I'm not wearing my superintendent's hat, my plan is to be out and about in the building. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent. I think it's a great, great success on the CVT programs. I know, I know you always attribute it to dollars, but it's more than that, it's the 870 students that we're giving an opportunity to explore a different career path, and I know that BP is always at maximum capacity. Of course, they're building a whole new school, but it's just a great, great success, and thank you so much for leading the charge, and of course, for the co-directors, Ms. Hartung and Mr. Reposo, for also leading the charge, so.
If I could just add, the 870 students, now, that's more than the number of Taunton students attending BP, so to put in perspective.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Absolutely great. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Motion to accept the superintendent's report.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Administrative business, any business with the staffing report?
Motion to accept. Second.
Well, are we going to do that with number two also?
Yes.
Taunton Public School Staffing Update.
One, two.
One and two, and what about three?
No.
Any further discussion on three? Is there any further discussion on three?
I think we should spread these out, because I think staffing update is an item on.
Are we going to be discussing the staff at number two?
Yeah, I think so. And certainly the enrollment is separate.
Okay, we'll do it separately. I just wanted to see if we could do them all at once. Okay, so, I'm sorry.
Motion to accept item number one.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Item number two, Taunton Public School Staffing Update.
So staffing remains fluid. I think if you compare reports, you'll notice on the Chamberlain, Chamberlain took a dip because he had resignation, so that's what the minus 3 percent indicates. But you'll notice that our goal is to get to 100 percent staffing. And we are, we are close. We are, we have 18 remaining positions, and I provided you with a listing of those remaining positions on the backside of that memo.
Yep. Motion to.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may. So impacting the district itself, I know every position's critical. Are we at any desperate need or challenge right now with these vacancies that just occurred?
The most challenging at this time of year is also filling a science position or filling a math position. And what's also challenging this time of year is supporting the reset rooms that the school committee approved last year as a budget priority. We're finding it difficult to identify social workers and behavior intervention case workers. But for the most part, it's not something that's uncommon in other districts, and we continue to refresh. We continue to interview and fill these positions as they occur. Unfortunately, we're still losing staff to other districts. Today, we lost an adjustment counselor to a school system up the road. So again, it's going to remain fluid. The goal is to get over as close to 100 percent as possible. I think last year, we ended at 96, and I'd like to be higher or above 96, with the ultimate goal being 100 percent.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. George?
Thank you. I must add a question, Superintendent Cabral. Would we be able to work with outside agencies to maybe fill some of those positions through a contract of some sort?
I'm always interested. If you have any ideas or suggestions, maybe we can connect offline.
Thank you. Question, if I may.
Mr. Laura?
Along with what Superintendent just indicated, these needs are still being met on a day-to-day basis, just that we don't have a full time.
Yeah. For example, the reset space, we've identified two positions for that space. So there is a tutor in the room working with the students, and then the guidance counselors backfill in the building to provide supports. So, but if it's a teaching position, buildings, because of the support of this committee, we have everyday subs, or building designated subs that can cover those positions, or substitute teachers that work throughout the district that may have an interest in that area of study or that area of learning. So we do fill in what subs is needed, or we backfill with our own teachers through coverage.
Just a continuation. If we need a waiver of any kind from Department of Education, they're pretty agreeable. They work with us.
DESI has been outstanding as far as emergency waivers and extending the emergency waivers. And Dr. Butts and her team, they have a direct line to DESI, and they've become very astute at navigating those channels.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. And then we have Taunton Public School District Enrollment Update.
So this report looks a little different from what I've been sharing with you in the past, because this report covers or demonstrates what we submitted as part of our October 1st SIMS report. So these are the numbers that will be utilized to calculate FY '25 Chapter 70. So I'm just going to highlight areas that I think are important to share with you and the public. And then I also provided you with a detailed background of detailed information on the back of the memo. I apologize. I mean, you know I love data, and I love spreadsheets, so I got a little carried away, but I'd be happy to discuss and break it down further if needed. So just some key, just some key metrics to share in versus 2022, 2023, and we saw our enrollment increase by one and a half percent, from 7,905 to 8,025 students. And I believe that'll play, that'll play a significant role in the Chapter 70 dollars we receive for fiscal '25. This committee has invested heavily in pre-K, and we're on the cusp of possibly adding a sixth classroom. So pre-K has increased by 5.9 percent. As this is something the state is moving towards, Taunton is already ahead of the game, and I believe that'll go a long way in helping to address the three, the third and fourth grade issue that we were discussing earlier. As the sooner we get our kids into school, the sooner we get them learning on how, what it takes to be a successful student. Kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, has increased by 6.1 percent to 611. Grades one through five has also demonstrated growth, with second grade experiencing the highest increase of 14.8 percent. Grade six to eight also grew, each roughly by 3 percent. And in the 12th grade, I believe the 12th grade, this is probably attributed to the credit recovery program the high school ran last year, they saw an increase of 12th graders by 2.6 percent. When it comes to our specialized populations, our EL population increased by 24.5 percent. Now, EL students who are new to the country rose from 86 students to 234, which is 172 percent increase. Special education students in grades three through five saw a 5.1 percent increase. And special education students for ages six through 21 saw a slight drop by 2.8 percent. I apologize for not giving you a breakdown of the acronym, but our Title I population increased by 4.4 percent. And FLNE stands for First Language Not English. That increased by 11 percent. So again, I believe the overall increase in enrollment plus the increases in the specialized populations will result in additional Chapter 70 dollars, which we will then utilize to support all our learners. That concludes that report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Subcommittee reports. High School Subcommittee, Mr. Falowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this evening, during the high school subcommittee, it was attended by myself, Ms. Viera, Mrs. Fagan, and Dr. DeMello. Mr. Delaney, the principal of Taunton Alternative High School, presented his school's school improvement plan. As with the other schools that have come before us, Principal Delaney's plan addresses the district's two priorities, which is improvement of student writing, along with supporting students' social and emotional well-being. It's important to note that, given the small population of students required to take the MCAS at the alternative high school, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is unable to provide an accountability rating for the school. As a result, Mr. Delaney and his staff examines local data very closely to gauge improvement. Areas of focus this year, besides the two previously mentioned, is the reimagining of the alternative high school, now that it's reached its 10th year anniversary. We are examining very closely if they're meeting the needs of all students, and there's a community input team focused on doing that work. Re-engagement of attendance is another area which is being examined, and of course, along with examining, supporting the students with their post-secondary pursuits. Ultimately, Mr. Delaney and all the educators at the alternative high school want to ensure that each student earns their high school diploma, ensuring that, ensuring that all students have that opportunity. One thing of note, Mr. Delaney stated that they're doing a lot more to reach out to the families of the students. So last year at this time, they had had four meetings with families. This year, at this time, they've had 20 meetings with the families, utilizing his clinical team of adjustment counselors, truancy officers, guidance counselors, everybody working together, meeting with the students and their families to assess their needs. So great work by Principal Delaney and his staff at the Taunton Alternative High School. And that is the report.
Move to accept the report.
Second.
As presented.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiori?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. Enos. Our first item was review of the Use of Facilities memorandum, which was received and placed on file. And we had a bid opening for the vestibule projects for the various schools for security. We received two bids, one from the Zot Glass in Holyoke, and another from GBW Incorporated of Lynn. And they were both found to meet the qualifications for a good bid, and they've been referred to the administration for review and recommendation. Then, following that, we received the review of the bids that were submitted last time for the Taunton High School food truck, and bid was awarded to Food Truck Builders Group for $168,700. That was the recommendation of the administration, and the committee voted to approve that. And then we had two bills payable warrant, first for fiscal '23 in the amount of $29,011.76, and a second for fiscal '24 in the amount of $608,286.80. And both of those were approved as presented, and then the committee adjourned.
Is there a motion?
I saw move the recommendation, and the report presented by the chairman. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So voted. Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes, the Unit A Teachers Subcommittee met on October 25th at 4:00 in the afternoon with the Joint Labor Management Committee of the TEA, and they bring concerns that arise during, during the year and things. I think the most interesting concern was them having to cut out all these... They, whatever that, I forgot the name of the program, Mr. Cabral.
Fabia.
Yeah, and it was, they had to cut out all the letters and stuff like that. They didn't come pre-cut. And that seemed to be a really big concern about, and I can't understand, it's kind of like getting alphabet, and you're supposed to, the old Fisher-Price things, and you don't have the letters. You have to build them yourself, and it was, that seemed to be a big concern. But all the concerns that they raised with us, we forwarded to the attention of the administration to get back to the teachers' union.
Yeah, and if I can just add, Mrs. Fagan.
Sure.
I have met with Mrs. Monahan and Mr. Barata. Our plan is to send them our responses with all the appropriate backup by Friday, November 3rd.
Okay. That's the report.
Can you get a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept the report.
Motion and second on discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was part of that subcommittee. And just, just for better clarity, I guess, it was a vendor issue. They were buying the material from a certain vendor, and that vendor wasn't, how should I say, enabling them to automatically set up. They had to go the extra mile to cut out these magnets. So I think it's going to be resolved.
Yeah, they were magnets. That's what it was, yeah.
It's going to be resolved very quickly, and I think we've already addressed that. So.
The only reason I chuckled, because I was keeping tallies of the number of times magnets were brought up.
Right.
I mean, all our teacher concerns are serious. We take them serious, and we brainstormed some pretty, I think, creative solutions on how to address that and alleviate the workload concern that was brought to our attention.
And it was about time management. They were spending too much time on building these magnets, which I agree with them. They didn't need to spend any time.
I think they were cutting them out.
Just change the vendor. That's all we did.
Okay.
And also, if I may.
Excuse me, Mr. Laura?
The issue with the accumulation of boxes being delivered to certain rooms where they were saying the boxes are just taking up the spaces, and we need, we need the space to teach, not to accumulate boxes of.
Yep.
This product. They would say.
So do we have the matter under control?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. All right. So there's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Long Range Planning Subcommittee, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Long Range Plan and Public Property Subcommittee met on Monday, October 30th, 2023. Committee consists of myself, Mr. Enos, and Mr. George. Members from the school department present were Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendent Brenda Monahan, Mark Outivianelli, Mark Freitas, Michelle Reposo. Also in attendance was Dr. DeMello and Christine Fagan. The first item we discussed was the Taunton Alternative High School rain screen. At a recent long-range planning meeting, the committee recommended working with an architect to suggest cost-effective ideas for the rain screen. The architect, Compass Group Architect out of Free Town, recommended replacing the copper rain screen. The Taunton Public Schools requested 11 quotes. Only one company responded. The quote was in the amount of $360,000. The quote was more expensive than the other two previous quotes received at $327,000 and $335,000. Since both ideas were costly, Superintendent Cabral suggested requesting quotes to paint the rain screen, and that quote came back at $89,000. A motion was made by Mr. Enos, seconded by Mr. Viera to authorize the administration to award the project to R.J. Ford in the amount of $95,550. Proceed with the understanding that any change orders exceeding 10 percent of the project costs will require approval from the Long Range Planning Subcommittee. The funding source will be TPS revolving account. The second item that we discussed was the high school commercial kitchen. There were no bids that came back from the initial bid proposal. They think that was due to the fact of the time, and it was done in the summertime. Everybody was really busy. So they are going to rebid it in November, and hoping to have bids back by January. So Mr. Enos, motion, seconded by Mr. Viera to authorize the administration to proceed, bid the project for January 2024. Tiger Den patio. La Mac Landscape installed the construction fence, began digging for the footings. The patio columns on October 18th. We're looking to wrap the project up in about six weeks. No action was taken. It was for informational purposes only. Playground's a great thing. Elizabeth Pole playground's being installed and will be completed in two weeks. And they are going to be ADA compliant, which is excellent news. Chamberlain Tigatot's playgrounds have been ordered and will be installed in the spring. East Taunton Elementary Playground School Design is in the planning phase, which is more excellent news for our kids during recess. I know it's my kid's most favorite time of the day. Most others. No action was taken on that. It was for informational purposes only. Hopeall School Update. We talked about the school. We talked about the age of the school. We talked about a lot of the costs associated with the school, and we want to get more information. Mr. Enos made a motion. It was seconded by Mr. Viera to authorize the administration solicit a quote for conducting a comprehensive structural assessment on the facility. See if it's up to codes, what it will cost for ADA requirements, so on and so forth. And that motion carried. The last thing we discussed was athletics. Again, great morning news for our kids and our facilities. The renovation of the Jack Trip softball field was approved by the committee, estimated cost of $2,200,000. It's going to be a turf field. Clay, combination of clay on the infield for safety purposes. So we're really excited to get that project underway in the summer of 2024. The installation of the multipurpose turf JV and soccer combination field was also approved, and Buck Mahoney baseball field, lighting, bleachers, and press box. And that concludes the report.
Move the recommendation, the report, with the referrals as presented by the chairman to the administration.
Second on discussion. The last ones that you mentioned were add-ons.
Yes, they were add-ons. If the funding is permitted, we expect that we're probably only going to have enough funds for maybe one, and the determination will be made out of later date.
Subject to funding.
Yes, needs basis.
So there's a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
Motion and second on discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it'd be important to put those renderings up on a chart. When I went to City Hall just the other day, they have beautiful, the Vol Park?
Yes.
On Oak Street, they have the wonderful renderings of what it's going to be, and I think we should share with the public here at, you know, maybe at the administration building here, or on our website, because it's a definite beautiful, beautiful project, and I think the city will be proud of it. So.
Part of the motion.
If we could do that at some point, it doesn't have to be part of the motion, but if we could do that, it'd be much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fiori?
Thank you. And I'm personally in favor of that also. I've been looking forward to those facilities upgraded, but way of really showing my age, I actually knew Buck Mahoney.
Wow.
Okay, so there's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. New business, Taunton Public Schools, FY '25 Budget Timeline.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, I now want to thank Assistant Superintendent Brenda Monahan for putting together the FY '25 Budget Timeline. Just some key milestones just to bring to your attention quickly. Item four, so all principals and all department heads will have their budgets due to Assistant Superintendent Monahan by December 8th. Governor Healy's budget is due to be released on January 24th, which I believe is a Wednesday. And then we will start with the school committee. We'll start our budget presentations, our principal budget presentations on January 24th, and then you can expect to receive my budget message at the February 7th meeting. And again, this is a living, breathing document. There may be. And again, this is a living, breathing document, there may be some modifications as we continue to close out, or Assistant Superintendent Monahan and her department continues to close out twenty-three, manage fiscal twenty-four, and plan for fiscal twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. I is unfinished business, action item updates, City of Taunton Solar Projects, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, I provided you with an update based on discussions from our last school committee meeting. So I provided you with a summary of the presentation that was made by City of Taunton CFO, Patrick Villa Russo, Energy Consultant Matthew Parent, Superintendent of Buildings Chris Carmichael, Fire Chief Stephen Levine, and Captain Robert Bastis from Fire and Safety Prevention. So in a nutshell, the group made a presentation regarding a solar installation to the magnitude of four hundred and thirty-three kilowatts at the Joseph C. Chamberlain Elementary School, which would generate an approximate savings to the school department of about eighty-five thousand dollars. There were three options that were mentioned, a full net metering, and I provided you with a summary, a solar, a full net metering with a solar battery, and then a solar with a re-roofing, because as Superintendent Chris Carmichael, Building Superintendent Chris Carmichael mentioned, the Chamberlain School is in desperate need of a new roof. So Mr. Parent did mention that a lot of cities and towns are taking advantage of a direct pay, which allows thirty percent of the gross project to come back to the city in the form of a check or a credit. Captain Bastis addressed concerns regarding access, or the fire department having access to the solar arrays, should there be an issue, or should they be compromised? And he assured the committee that the fire department has experience, and he also assured the committee that these systems would be self-contained, and that these systems would have suppression systems. I believe the suppression system was in reference to the battery option, so I apologize if that last sentence is misleading. And then Captain Bastis and Superintendent of Buildings Chris Carmichael also mentioned or addressed questions regarding the roof of our schools being able to withstand the additional load. And Superintendent of Buildings Chris Carmichael mentioned that commercial buildings hardly ever need structural upgrades, but he also assured the committee and the members in attendance that there would be a structural assessment. So in addition to the summary, I've also provided you with a survey, so I did list a, provide a survey, and you have the backup and the results in your packet. I did list the survey on the Mass Superintendents List Serve. Unfortunately, only twenty-two out of the three hundred-plus superintendents replied, but there were mixed reviews. Question one, which asked, do any school buildings in your district have rooftop solar generation systems? Now, of the twenty-two who responded, ten said yes. Question two, if they do have rooftop solar systems, now, how many buildings do they have them on? And a majority, one to three, so it sounds like the smaller school systems are taking advantage of the solar system rebates and credits. And then the next question was, what type of schools have, or what type of schools are housing the solar arrays? And it looks like a majority of the districts who responded, it's their high schools that are occupying or where they've installed the arrays. And then question four was regarding savings, it seemed like that was a mixed bag, as three responded yes, one responded no, and seven were unsure. And of the twelve, of the twelve who responded, of the twelve, of the twenty-two who responded, eleven districts would entertain communication, or further communication discussions with members of my team and Mrs. Monahan's department to discuss their projects. I also provided you with the listing of the districts who responded, and not in the report, just some follow-up we did since I wrote the report on Thursday. Dayton Rahobat Superintendent has offered, members of the school committee, members of the building department, members of my administration, if you wanna take a tour and see their solar arrays, which I believe there's our canopy systems, they'd be more than welcome to entertain us. Norfolk Superintendent Ingrid Alardi, she's more than welcome to have her see a rooftop system. And I believe the Four River Public Schools Superintendent Maria Pont, they have a rooftop solar system at the Frank M. Sylvia Elementary School, and she's a great thought partner, and I'm sure she would have no wish of what else, taking a tour. So you have information, if the committee wants to entertain visiting some of these sites, I'd be happy to work with Assistant Superintendent Monahan to schedule a visit around your schedules. Just be mindful, there are eight of you, and it's very difficult, nine of the mayor wants to attend. There's a lot of folks with competing schedules, so wherever the majority responds, those would be the dates that we would go on a tour, if that's the wishes of the committee.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Motion to schedule the meetings with these other school systems.
Canopy and solar?
Yeah.
Canopy and roof?
Yeah.
Second.
Motion and second, on discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think that would be very, very helpful, especially the Dayton Rahobat project right down the road, since we're talking about transforming the parking and transit area in and out of Parker and the high school, there could be an opportunity, if we're gonna be digging up parking lots or whatever, that this could play a nice role in it, so that's my piece, so thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Next, Superintendent Cabral, is that an announcement for you to make?
Oh, sorry, just making sure the team read all the motions.
Sure.
So just updates, the Mokehi dedication, so thank you, everyone who are RSVP'd, that'll take place, the Mokehi Library Dedication will take place on Saturday, November fourth, at ten a.m. And again, that is an event open to the public, and the Manet Health Community ribbon-cutting, which will take place on Friday, November third. Again, thank you to all those who are RSVP'd, that'll be held on Friday, November third. Just so the committee knows, the ceremony will take place in the high school presentation room, which is located in the main lobby. From the presentation room, we will proceed to the Manet Health Center for the ribbon-cutting, and then there'll be food and light refreshments in the Parker Library. So please bring something comfortable, and we are reserving parking in the maintenance lot. The maintenance lot is the lot where we have the lovely athletic mural behind the high school. There will be reserved parking, and it'll be a short walk through the high school, if the weather's nice, you can walk along the front of the high school and enter through the main lobby. I'm hearing the weather's gonna be lovely.
Thank you. All right, there is no press here this evening, so...
Before, Mayor, if I may, before we conclude, we all know there's gonna be a certain event happening on Tuesday, and the composition of the school committee will change. Our dear friend, Mr. Jody Fiori, will not be on the ballot, and I asked the superintendent to put together some of the accomplishments while Jody Fiori was with us, and I think it's worthy that he be part of this, if you don't mind, Superintendent.
Well, actually, I think all of you are deserving of recognition, because you've, when you look at the list, and this is only thirteen items, including a Madam Mayor who serves on this committee, you have accomplished a great deal of work. I mean, we collectively bargained seven contracts to ensure that all our employees received a fair wage. You have expanded pre-K opportunities throughout the community, you've expanded early college opportunities to our most marginalized or neediest learners. We've approved reset spaces to make sure the social-emotional needs of our students are addressed. You've invested heavily in school adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, team chairs, and school psychologists, so that our kids and our teachers can receive the education they need, and our teachers can do the job that we paid them to do. You supported balanced budgets, which resulted in zero staff reductions, while always continuing to advocate for a hundred percent net school spending, and I commend the mayor for honoring or always reaching a hundred percent net school spending or higher. You supported an impact bargain in new high school schedule, you supported the creation of an eighth Chapter seventy-four program, you approved an impact bargain, the virtual high school, which is serving fifty students. And whenever I ask for additional instruments, Jordan, who has a love for music, you are always quick to support additional loaner instruments for our middle school students and our high school students, where now we have twelve percent of the high school participating in the band, and that doesn't even begin to account for the transportation. Mr. Barata talked about the high-quality instructional material, which you were very strategic to purchase five years out, so now we don't have to worry about curriculum for the next five years, a social-emotional learning curriculum, a math curriculum, an ELA curriculum, and now a history curriculum. And let's not talk about the zero, the numerous funds, or the numerous projects that we've accomplished on campus with zero impact to the taxpayer, which is the baseball stadium to the tune of two million dollars, the football and track renovation to the tune of two-point three million dollars, and as Mr. Viera mentioned, soon to come online, a renovated softball field. You were very strategic as far as utilizing our Esso dollars to create a student-based health center that will service all students and all residents in the Taunton Public Schools, several new playgrounds that are ADA compliant, regarding opportunities for our kids in our community, a food truck, an outdoor dining area, and we're gonna have a commercial, state-of-the-art, industry-standard kitchen for our culinary after-party. That's something to be commended for. And what you guys don't get a lot of credit for, and our champion, Jordan, for helping to lead this work, as well as Derek, and all of you who attended, is you participated to help understand the needs of our students and needs of our community. You all participated in a DEI workshop, a ground-level DEI workshop, so that you can have a base level of understanding of what the work looks like and why this work is needed in our school system. So I have enjoyed working with you these past two years, no matter how things shake out, you'll always have my number, you'll always have my email, and I hope we can continue this friendship and this relationship, but more importantly, the amazing work that we have accomplished in just a two-year period of time. So best of luck to everyone.
Thank you.
Jordan, I'm gonna miss the rides home, I'm gonna miss the mentorship, and just the opportunities to just talk life and talk facts with you, and we go way back, so I wanna wish you the best on your future endeavors as well. I've always enjoyed your company.
Because one of my future endeavors is on the ballot, just not with the school committee.
I'll be writing you in.
Thank you, and good luck to all.
Motion adjourned.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone.